...liberty and justice for all.
I'd like that.
Fixing your alphabet? Oh, you've got a little thing.
I've got to think about the left and the right. Need a motion to sign the warrants?
Uh, motion to sign the warrants.
All in favor? This is gonna go down really well tonight. Motion, second, take turns with the motions. Oh my goodness. It is certainly cold, I wouldn't wanna have car trouble tonight. That's when you put all that stuff in your car and make sure that you have something warm. Yeah, so maybe you could scoot in a little.
Is that too much straight to the table?
Where were you, by the way? You were in California. Now that you're back, huh? Having a good time? Well, we're glad you're back.
Yeah, same temperature, you know, all good.
So, uh, we need a, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for November twenty eighth. Do I have a second? You're gonna have the second place and you were there. I can keep the both though, as long as there's a motion and second. BMP warrant authorization.
This is just homework, cleanup work, making sure you're giving Suzette. The last one we have is for Randy, the treasurer. This gives her permission to do the BMP warrant weekly in between this, um, the regular select meeting.
Who was doing it, though?
We have an order from the previous select board to Randy as the treasurer, but now Suzette's going to be doing it.
So we're just making sure we've got everything. So, uh, you need a motion? So, uh, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we sign the order of municipal officers so that Suzette, Francis, can do the bi-weekly BMP reports.
A second then.
All in favor?
It's weekly.
Is it weekly? Sorry, weekly reports.
This gives us permission to do the clean.
So, adjusted and still second.
Oh, okay. All in favor? So, the names are already printed on here. I'm, I'm following the name. Have written. Now, we've come to the new business. Is there anybody in the audience looking for a liquor license?
Snap out of it.
This is your turn.
Thank you.
So, very happy to read you Frank Stockside liquor license renewal. We're so happy that you're here and that you're, are you gonna be open on weekends? And for a while, then you're taking a few weeks off, right? Is that a winner?
Well...
I'm not sure.
We're hoping to get some renovations done. If that works, then we might go for a couple of weeks, but other than that, we're hoping to hang here for the winter.
For what, Thursday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Very nice. Nothing's changed in the diagram of where everybody's sitting and all?
No.
And it's the same license?
No.
With spot?
Make a motion to approve the liquor license renewal for Frank Stockside. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
So you just have to come and get this on. Do you have the original? You can send it here. Is there a P?
No, there's no P.
We don't have a P, do we?
We have some other paper to add, but that was for the public.
Oh, we don't have the, have the add anymore, right?
Yeah.
Right. Should we just have to have this in the order? We're gonna get you a copy right now, it's been so cold out. I probably would like the copy now, would you? Very businessy.
Yeah.
When May's doing that, we have on the agenda, next Karen Burke is gonna talk about the local food system ordinance. We've got it.
Thank you.
I'm very excited to hear more about it. I know a little bit, I don't think they know enough, though.
I'm not an expert at all, and I'm here to, um, just, uh, you know, take questions and do some more research after the meeting. So, this pertains to LG seven twenty-five that was signed by Governor O'Connell in October of two thousand seventeen. And as of October, forty-three towns have adopted the ordinance in May related to the Act. And the Act recognizes local control regarding food systems. And I just wanna read a little bit here. It, it allows for direct producer-to-consumer sales, exempting producers from state licensing and inspection. Uh, it allows for selling of food as long as the transaction is between the producer of the food and the consumer for home consumption. So, you know, it eliminates wholesale, retailing, out of state, uh, out of the town, actually. Beyond the town. And it's, it's, the transactions between the producer of the food, whether it be a farmer or baker or canner or goat cheesemaker, um, and the consumer. So, it takes away, um, it, well, I shouldn't say it takes away, but, um, it brings to the town a local control over, over a lot of the food production. Um, and towns must create an pass and ordinance for this to be in effect. Even though there's a law in May, each town has passed their own ordinance. And I gave you an example of Machias's ordinance. And, um, so it brings the, it seeds local control, I mean, seeds, uh, the authority back to local governments and local control. And my point of view, the benefits are that it, um, it helps bolster smaller food operations and farming operations. We'll have more locally-produced healthy food available to your people in town, and it improves the ability to, for people to have cottage industries. Um, you know, and therefore it has an economic benefit. So examples of items that this might cover are milk, cheeses, cider, canned pickles, jams, vegetables, fruit, potatoes, et cetera. The law does exclude, um, uh, processing meat in poultry and selling directly to the consumer. That was excluded due to the USDA threatening to pull out, um, the ability of state to have processing plants that do that currently. So, um, I wouldn't be able to, you know, raise a town, I would do a piece of state on my property under this if I didn't have a licensed property facility. So those are the two exclusions, as far as I can see.
It doesn't actually say it in the regulations in, in the, in this body, but alcohol is also exempted. So, for me, like, I know you're smart, because you've probably seen my posts, but, like, I made hard cider for my own consumption, but one of my goals was to make sweet cider, like, non-alcoholic. And that's a processed food, so I know this, um, should be, I don't know, is it promulgated or take this on, or I don't know, whatever it's called at the, at the local level, that I would be able to do that and sell it directly to consumers. So here's my question.
For any municipality that you, let's say you go to Machias, but you're coming to Rebeck, are you covered on their ordinance for, so if you're, what, say you're going to a craft fair in a town, and you look up that they have an ordinance, are you then covered if you're selling your edible product to face-to-face with the consumer?
Yes, the...
In that town as well?
The, the consumer, the producer must sell it in the town, have to do with that, you know, basically, or when they lease their farm.
Okay, so, so what about the people from the farmers market that come here from another town?
They need to go to their municipality and get the same thing signed.
Well, that's my question, then. Then if they come to Rebeck, are they covered by our ordinance?
Right.
That's my question.
No.
No.
And, and actually, I'm gonna do some more research, and I was thinking of just getting hold of Will Tool, maybe he can point me to the right person. Because, um, there is some confusion about whether the food, in my mind, of whether the food products have to be sold on the premises where they're produced, or there is information out there that you can take it to community fairs, farmers markets, um, other community advanced church facilities, I kinda think. But I do need to get that clarified.
That'd be great. This is a wonderful idea, and I, I applaud it.
It's not very complex, like the ordinances, like you saw Machias's. It has, you know, most of its definitions, uh, it's pretty straightforward, um, as far as putting the ordinance together. I do realize it would have to go to a special town meeting if this, if, um, you know, you wanna put this forward. And I do, um, I've talked to Renee about, you know, waiting until things are bundled up for a special town meeting.
Why, we'd have to put it on with another special town meeting, but there's, there's nothing, some coming up.
There's expenses, so put things together.
Well, that would be my question.
I just had it, because I don't know, is there any liability on the town's part by doing this for, I'm a little local grower and I produce a can of something and somebody eats my can of something and gets profusely ill.
The ordinance has, I've looked at...
Or dies, right?
Or die, yeah.
They, they exclude the town from liability and put it wholly on the producer. And the consumer for taking, the consumer accepts, you know, responsibility in this.
In the boilerplate language, that is, I was gonna mean sentence.
Yeah.
In the boilerplate language, there's a clause in there that specifically states that the producer, and they have the definition, like, the producer is the, the grower of the food, the processor, um, is, maintains the liability of whatever it is that they're selling. So, if I decide I wanna can some beets and I give you botulism and you die, like, your family can still come sue me. Like, that's, that's how that's gonna work.
Now, but, you know, from, from your protection standpoint, does this shortcut anything that you're still responsible for with the state?
So here's where this is valuable as a form, like, this, this piece of legislation. Um, so, you guys know, I, I already run a farm. I already sell produce. So, um, I, for example, grow beets, and maybe in week four of the summer market, I don't sell all my beets. And I wanna process them and I wanna can them. As it's been up until now, like, because I don't have a state inspected kitchen, I can't sell those pickled beets to someone. But if we took this on, then it gives me the ability to direct sell. Now, there's the question of whether or not I can actually take those pickled beets then back to our market and sell them even though it's direct to consumer. We gotta get that clarified. But I can at least, if, use this boilerplate language, sell it from my house. Now, um...
The other thing is, like, the pickles, for example, you have to send batch to the state to get tested before you can start sending them. So it brings a lot of local, you know, um, food production, you know, and community exchange of food back to where it started, with an exempting small producers, not large ones. It just wouldn't cover factories, for instance, or big commercial farms, um, you know, they gave a couple of...
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, I mean, I know, I mean, I think it's all great.
Yeah.
I just still wanna make sure, you know, ma kettles not in the back, you know, making something that's horrendous because there's no longer, I mean, the reasons all of these regulations have been granted, probably overregulated, but regulated nonetheless for a reason.
It brings the liability, not that you don't, I mean, I already, like, if I got somebody sick as a grower, like, it's my, I carry liability insurance for that purpose. It still maintains with the, the grower or the producer, uh, the liability of whatever it is that you're selling, from a human health perspective.
Is it, is it required to carry liability if you're...
No, it's required to have an agreement.
So that's just a responsible thing to use it?
Yeah, I mean, it's the right thing to do.
Right. Again, I'm just looking at that ma kettle thing or whatever that means, I've no idea.
It's required to have an agreement with the consumer. So you post a sign, or you have a brochure, or whatever that is required, that you have an agreement with the consumer, so that the consumer understands that you're being exempted from, you know, from certain laws.
And I think, I think that's the reason they, they put in there face-to-face, you know?
Yeah, once you hand it to the consumer, you're saying, hey, I made this, it's fine, you know where it came from, you know where I am, if you have a problem with it, that's probably why it's face-to-face, that, that covers a lot.
Dan, just as an aside, I was babysitting in Kennedon for grandkids a week ago, or two weeks ago, and, um, my, my granddaughter was eating a piece of pizza, and it had, um, a piece of metal in it. And it was from the can, you know, the large, the tomato sauce, or tomatoes that come in a can, and I made some, I made some great pizza, by the way, but, you know, I mean, things can happen anywhere, a piece of metal, if, if my grandchild had swallowed it, it could have been a huge problem. Or not, but, um, you know, that's, that's a licensed, you know, facility, so.
So, right, point well taken. Even in the licensed facility, you're, you just have to be careful about things.
I'm just thinking, I think, um, I haven't seen any bad press about it, you know, I mean, uh, you know, dad who solves for this, maybe there are, but I haven't seen any. And what the...
No, nor have I, I'm just, I'm just generically speaking for the town.
Forty-three towns, what's, what percentage of the mean? Towns and cities, I guess.
There's a map on the website, on there, so you can color code, it shows the area.
Oh, okay, there is, is the website?
Yeah, I just checked that out today, that's pretty cool. Um, and to be clear from, uh, like, all of those regulations are created around basically pathogen kill, or, or a good portion of them are in regard to food regulations and processing regulations are around pathogen kill. And the statistical likelihood of ingesting things like listeria and fecal coliform, E. coli and salmonella. Um, and one of the main reasons that they exempted meat is because it's much higher risk than other, like, vegetable processing, or making cider, or like, some of the other things that are listed on here. Um, you can certainly have pathogens in milk and raw milk versus unpasteurized milk, and that's all an option, but the risk is higher when you start dealing with meat products. Um, so just wanted to point that out.
What about romaine lettuce?
Lettuce, probably. I could go and talk about romaine lettuce for a very long time.
Who would be responsible of the, when I, with E. coli in it?
The producer.
The producer.
Okay, if I'm purchasing it, would I have any way of knowing that?
Would I have to find out where it's from?
Until I, until the emergency room pulled me what I had?
Yeah, I mean, that's...
That's how it works now.
Yeah.
So the liability...
So in this, like, you know, like, if I gave you something that got you sick, like, it's me, you know where I live, I post my address at the grocery store, so.
But I don't necessarily know that I got the romaine from you.
Well, you would in this case.
Right, face-to-face.
Face-to-face.
If there's more than one producer and I bought from both.
That's your problem.
That puts the liability out of town.
The lab has to figure it out.
Then you know there's now only two options.
That's right.
Right?
And I would tell you that there are far better lettuce to eat than romaine anyway, so don't eat romaine lettuce. I don't wanna pull a bush here and not have children eat romaine lettuce.
The, the romaine lettuce issue, I think, is, um, or, or any other food recalls that we've had with regards to fresh produce or meat or anything else, has to do with pathogen kill and statistical likelihood in industrial food systems. This is intended to facilitate non-industrial food systems. And it's just a very different ballgame. So, you know, it's, uh, a lot of the contamination with respect to grains has to do with irrigation systems, overhead irrigation systems, and the ability to clean lettuce. Very difficult to wash lettuce, particularly, you can't sanitize lettuce. So, um, they have overhead irrigation, and when that irrigation system gets contaminated, it's millions of heads in the field, you know, and they statistically test according to USDA standards at these factories that process this stuff, but unfortunately, sometimes that doesn't work.
There is an exclusion, like you see in Machias's on six point three. The town of Machias assumes no liability for any products utilized under this ordinance. Not the only business ordinance identifies the producer or the processors from liability for their products.
I don't think you have to worry.
Oh, I'm not worrying, I'm just trying to open conversation with the viewers, that's all.
And I realize that if this goes forward eventually, there'll be a public hearing too, so it's good to get questions ahead of time, start doing research and answering questions.
Who would bring the ordinance? We get to Rebeck.
We did, we have to.
Yeah, I offered to Renee to give a draft, just to start a draft. I have time right now, in the next couple of months, so I thought you'd see some in January. Provide a draft that you could then go and...
Yeah. Or you can download it as a Word file and just dump it.
Well, what happens is Renee, it was nice of Karen to give us samples, and then she could plug it into a computer, and, and she'll probably bring the draft to us, and we will weaken to, to work with Rebeck.
I asked NMA for a template, and they don't, they don't have one.
Well, I really do wanna know if that, if it's, if you maintain your, basically craft fairs, which is personal interest in that, but if you go to, would that exempt you if you're face-to-face selling, if it's just a small freezer?
Yeah.
Because I know we have people in the farmers market that don't live in Rebeck to come. So by being here, would our ordinance cover them? That's my question.
No.
Dave, the people that are selling processed food in, at the Rebeck market are already licensed.
By the state.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter, it doesn't even apply to them. So it would be, um, like, the people that aren't selling processed foods that want to, that don't live in our municipality would be the question. Or, um, if we wanted to take our stuff processed and sell in someplace other than Machias, which also has an ordinance.
Right.
Um, let's say Dennisville Farmers Market, um, how does that work? Like, I don't, I don't have that clear, I don't know.
That, that's a que, that's a question. So, well, let's just hope we can get this all done before the, the new selling season. You know, by the spring, like, sometime by June, that would be good.
Do you have any idea of one, uh, a special town meeting, like, you know?
I can't remember off the, off the top of my head, but I know we have a couple things that do have to go to a special town meeting, and, uh, Renee? I'm drawing a blank, but I know we discussed it.
I guess, I guess, I can think of to put up and make one, so.
Well, and there, there's a large, large grant that...
Oh, absolutely.
We may have to have a public hearing and special town meeting to, for the grant, you
know, sometimes there's required for grants, and they, and they can't wait till August and so.
And people would like to get set up ahead of time, so that's not just in the season, but months ahead, so.
Why don't we have a public hearing before all this?
Okay, so, we could have a public hearing in, like, February.
That's okay, it is okay.
That's true.
And then we can gather together, anything, and put all this, the whole special town. When would you ideally want it? March or April?
Twenty-five people have to show up?
Yes.
And at the special, not at the public hearing, but at the special town meeting, you have to have twenty-five people, and then the majority of the twenty-five people have to vote. You have to win by majority of those twenty-five, twenty-five registered voters, let's go.
Yeah, oh, okay. Yeah, well, I'm suddenly far more interested in one of the datas then.
Yeah. What's too late and what's too soon in terms of, I know we need to write it up, so it's...
I think May is even too late, so.
That's what I'm saying.
Late March and early April? We could pack it together with a bunch of other stuff.
Yeah, with other, I figured.
Well, we'll have to see what we have coming out.
Yeah.
Couple of hearings from March sixth.
And then how many days we're gonna have some special town meeting? The, you need, you need, uh...
Seven days to vote.
Does that sound good for a public hearing, March sixth?
Sure. I mean, we can decide right this minute, but, uh, that's...
I like really to do stuff, like, we're talking about it, otherwise it just doesn't happen.
I can work on a draft, and if anybody else out there wants to help with that, give me a call, contact Renee, she can give me her number.
So are you gonna, well, if you just, yeah, send it to Renee, she'll give it to us, and we'll look at it, and then we can, it sounds perfect.
Five, January, I'll call, it's probably earlier, but with the holidays, I'll just say January.
So let's do March sixth, then. And so five o'clock, is that enough, an hour before? Five PM before the March sixth, and then we could, we can either have it two weeks or the first, you know, in April. Definitely by May first, and how about we choose for that?
And I'll assume that the ordinance needs to go through the town attorney before it gets to public.
Once you've finished all your edits.
And once we just do some boilerplate of the town.
But if we're predominantly copy-pasting and all that, it should be an issue. Just a couple of questions to answer.
Did NMA say that they won't get it?
No, they said to go with our town attorney.
Have we sent all of, I don't think we've sent all the ordinance that's been written to the town attorney before, and others simple, and other towns. If we have forty-three other towns to look at, I'm not sure how...
I'll compare it with a few towns.
If we need the town attorney or not, if, if the liability clause is in there.
Oh, I think it's a good thing. Awesome.
Yeah, it wouldn't be much fun, anyway, two grand dollars, probably, for them. I don't know, though, when you get a lawyer involved, they can charge lots of money. What?
We need a motion to, like, support this.
Yeah, who wants to run it, bring up a motion?
Motion to support the Meat Food Sovereignty Act discussion or promotion thereof.
Okay, wait a second.
For Rebeck.
Second. All in favor? I'm working now.
Too bad, Rachel.
She would've been for it.
Yeah, she would have.
She would've been, she was old.
She likes making cookies. I'm pretty sure she would've been for that. Hi, Karen.
I read the whole thing this afternoon.
You did?
Yes.
Wow, it's been really cold out, no cement pouring today, huh?
I did not read it.
Policy book, thank you very much. Okay, so I think I gave you an update, update on that, that we're gonna read the personnel policy as homework, and come back at five, uh, next time. When's the next meeting, December what?
Twenty-sixth, April.
And if you could just, you can, you're welcome to mark in any suggestions. I would ask that, that when you get to a red suggested edit, that you check it off, that you approve or disapprove, so that we can go ahead with the red, the red check. And then if there's anything else that you think of, I know that there, on the case of the, um, part-time employee receiving benefits for holidays, it, it's been written, if the holiday falls on the day that they would normally work. But it also further needs to read that if, in fact, they do work a full-time day, we do have part-time employees that only work four hours in a day, and I don't believe they should be paid for holiday pay. But if somebody works on a Tuesday and Thursday, and Christmas and New Year's, you're happy to be on two things, and they, why should they be faulted? Because they're, they're expecting to be paid for the days that they, they wait to always show up, so. That's just some, that's one thing that I've looked at. But if you, if you do read it and you see, because we did not, nor Renee, nor I, nor John, so, I believe he might have a little bit to do with some of this, but if it's not what we, we want as a board, now, that is one of our primary duties as a board, is to keep the personnel policy up to date. And, uh, it hasn't been revised since two thousand and four, so...
Well, has he read? Just, while we dig into this, what does it do?
From what I've read, it's like somebody's thoughts and...
I don't know, is there any bull in that?
There's a blue paragraph regarding, if you become an elected official, then you automatically will be taken off from anything that you are on. And it used Tony Canoni as an example. He was on the, if you, you were employed, if you were employed by the town with that, you automatically forfeit that position if you become a selectman, so.
So if you run, you were a stipend employee, you have to, you can't be stipended anymore.
Yeah, he actually was a part-timer down at the recycling center, so he had to get done that position.
The benefits of running as a selectman.
For what?
Karen. Joanne's not running again this year, she told us. Twenty-eight years. So, leaving somebody for her spot, if she's really telling us.
We'll talk her into it.
So that's all for that. For updates on two thousand and four, and, oh, this is an unfun subject, go ahead, Renee, you know more about it, I didn't know really the facts about it.
Uh, we're, two thousand and four international plow truck, dump truck is, um, very sick. It is in need of, um, some very costly repairs. The high end estimate is in fifteen thousand dollar range. Uh, the parts have been ordered, we're hoping that it won't be that much, that was the bulk that it could be. So, the parts are here, and it's been down for about a week, and we've been lucky not to have much snow. Uh, there was a plan B if we needed another resource, but Ricky's been biting his nails, and Timmy has been helping Peter Yates so that the labor will be down on the truck repairs. He's given the chance to learn more about the truck, the mechanics of it, and, um, him being able to be a mechanic involved. and him being able to be a mechanic involved helps keep the labor cost down. So, we're hoping to have it back enough and running by the end of this week.
And this is an example of having to go to a special town meeting. We go way above what is normally in his budget, that we would have to go and ask the town to spend money on undeliberated funds. We would have to be a special town meeting for that. So, let's hope we don't have to, I don't know, we don't have it in the budget for that much.
After these repairs, it's going to be in really good shape again. And we're getting a brand-new head, and brand-new, basically, they're rebuilding the engine, like Jason was explaining today, they're building, rebuilding the engine.
Are you aware of what's going on?
They're putting everything brand-new, let's call it, in, in brand-rebuild. And I just had one done on one of my trucks last year.
So, you recommend it?
I would, yes. And it's all Caterpillar parts, they use them. So, it's, it's going to be a brand-new engine.
That's good.
Yeah, that's, that's the only way to go.
The line item for the truck is going to be, is going to be blown out of the water, but if he can at least keep it, his budget, overall budget, he's, he's really going to watch it from now until June 30.
And we haven't had, we haven't really gotten into winter, so.
Right.
So, if it looks like we're, I mean, and it goes, when you, at the end of the fiscal year, it goes across all our departments, so it doesn't mean that if public works goes over. But we already used that with emergency fund that we, we put aside, right, $5,000? But that's gone, that'll be gone.
Well, what happened to the truck? I mean, it's, it's just a normal thing, you know, it's, it's.
I asked if it had, if it was available, and they said no.
So, that's why we tried to start an emergency repair fund, which is, maybe, we should have started that a few years ago.
It's just a fund alone, and it's a blast.
So, we'll just, we'll have to keep the town posted on whether, I guess you said we'll have to keep this updated on costs and how far over we went. So, other business?
Shirley Brown would like to be appointed to the Town Celebration Committee. I have her paper in the paper. And Ralph Dennison for the St. Harbor Alternates, St. Harbor Committee.
Who wants to make a motion for that?
Make a motion for Shirley Brown as Town Celebration Committee, and Ralph Dennison to the St. Harbor Alternates.
I'd go for Shirley.
All those in favor of Shirley Brown?
They won't be all in, I don't know, can I vote for that? Yeah, they said, okay, just an alternate, it's not a complete decision. All righty, well.
Once again, two more fine citizens of Lubeck stepping forward.
I think I can, I think. We can use all the volunteers we can get.
Oh, they're just still here because it's cold outside.
They're just being very polite. So, ROF?
It's on the other one.
At the ROF meeting yesterday, the board asked that they take out $60,000 from their fund to be put into a CD. So, this is the paperwork to do that, that allows, gives, through that permission to do that.
And it's better, I guess you found a better rate?
Better rate, yes.
Yes, it's, it's been previous, I was not at yesterday's meeting, they moved it to the morning, so I was in the morning, but it's something we discussed prior to.
So, they want us to do that? Jason, want to try to make a motion?
Not really, but I will. To make a motion, it looks up that.
Okay, do you have a second? We're, I'll second it, because she's on the ROF committee. So, it was for the $60,000 to be put into a CD. Do you have a length of term? I mean, what is, I mean, there's nothing, anything specific here, I mean, how long? Because what if it's a long time and you need the money?
It's okay.
That's my only question.
Yeah, they had, they brought, they brought that up as well, and penalty, you make more on the interest than the penalty, so it's still worth it to take the risk.
It's probably their 18-month one, I think they have. All right, did we vote? I can't remember. All in favor again, because we can't remember.
Remember what?
We voted on that. All right, let's see, public comment, committee updates. Harbor Board.
I have none, we don't even know when the last.
Well, I know, the only one, he's the only one that came.
His is the 17th, right?
It's next Monday.
I talked to some of the members, and they asked me when's the next meeting.
It's the third Monday of the month, but starting in January, it's going to be the fourth Monday, because all of the holidays fall on the third Monday.
That's what he was asking.
So, and you definitely don't want the fourth Monday this month, because that's, like, between Christmas, yeah, that's Christmas Eve. So, Monday, I think there is some things to discuss about the voice keys, so, I don't, yes. No, we're still trying to change the key, we haven't got there yet.
What?
We're working on it, the last key that we had made was going to work. It was still working, I mean, it didn't, it defeated the purpose of what they were trying to do. They had all these keys made, and then somehow, we were lucky enough to find out that the keys were going, that the old keys were still going to work. And the whole point of changing the voice keys were to, like, make the old keys non-workable, so we could collect mooring fees and include the key charge in collecting the mooring fees, which was, in a perfect world, going to work out. So, now, we're getting the key rechanged, we can't do it during the drag season, because they're having to change, you guys have to change your, if you're urchining and scalping, you have to put, change the drags in between in the same day, it's crazy, so we need, they need the voice. So, we are not going to change the key, I agree.
I would go for it, they actually need two voices.
I've only mentioned Dee is thinking of putting in a voice.
They've already got it up.
They have it up, but it's not a big one, though.
There's, there should be a grant out there somewhere to get a second good voice.
There should be.
I mean, the fishermen really, really need it.
And there's some pieces of equipment that they use, that you sometimes are just kind of hoping, said crane.
I know, but the taxpayers grumble about the, supporting the fishing industry, and that's why we went to billing and raising the mooring fees and billing, and getting a lot of generated income that we never got from years past. There was no regulation on that, and so I think now that's created a fund to take care of the voice, but the thought of, I agree with you, a second voice would be just great, but.
Which come this June, Will.
That's something you're going to bring up in the Harbor Board meeting, aren't you, Jason?
We already have.
Okay.
Isn't this June, then, the first year we'll be able to see some of the fruits of that mooring fees and key labor?
They have been picking up the bills, they have been paying.
Okay, good.
The second bill, does one else? Last week.
Out of their money.
The second billing, one else?
For what?
For the mooring, the people that haven't paid their mooring fees.
Oh, yes, I know, because Debbie up at, yeah, that's great, really excellent. You know, I, I don't know about you, but unless somebody sends me a bill, and I give them the mail, I don't really think about generating, walking in the door and saying, here's my.
What, what about those?
I need an invoice. And plus, it's, for most of them, it's tax deductible, because it's part of their business, so they really do need a bill. The billing, the billing system is working really well. So, okay.
So, that's sort of updated ROF with that, our next meeting, of course, is the, is it the night? Eight?
Yep, eight.
Eight.
Three.
3:00. Please, the town hall, if you have any entrepreneurial thoughts and ideas towards this. And I was away for AOL, because that's it.
Are you on the AOS?
AOS.
I don't know when the next meeting is, I haven't heard.
I don't either, I haven't.
Well, you need to find out from.
I do.
We actually, we'd like to have someone come and tell us what's going on with that.
Right, and that's why I'm here to say that, I'm not here to tell you what's going on.
Deceiving the AOS, or they're checking to see whether it's costly.
Cost effective.
Cost effective. So, our Shellfish Committee is January 7th at 6:00. And the next St. Harbor Committee meeting is going to be January 3rd at 5:00. And that's an extremely important meeting, because there is a, the DMR, and I don't know if you saw it on WADI, but there's a request for proposals for a letter of intent. And actually, I need the select board, I should really have a forum, because myself, to, to send in a letter of intent for the working waterfront. They have $2 million to give out, and we need it for St. Harbor. So, of course, they put it in between Christmas and New Year's, four weeks. Get your letter of intent in by January 4th. But I'm working on it. And so, that is going to be at that meeting, what we're going to ask for. I don't know enough about how to structure the grant yet, but I'm hoping that we can use it as matching funds for a federal grant, and one of the committee members is looking into, into the larger federal grants for, for like, $4 million is what we're going to need for the breakwater. And there are grants out there for that amount of money, but they're federal, and they're federal infrastructure grants. So, usually, they involve matching funds, and so, in this particular case, we can't afford matching funds, so we have to find a grant to pay for the matching fund. So, hopefully, it works out. Oh, you know, we try, right?
That's right.
No, I mean, for you?
I have, just on my notes, the planning board should be meeting December 18th at 5:00. Joanne would mention the December 10th manual reading for the ambulance authority at Fermi Restaurant.
Public comment?
I'll mention, don't we have, since this is our last meeting before Christmas, is not tomorrow the festival or parade of lights?
I think it's.
No, it's Wednesday, Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday, okay, Sunday.
I'm a little.
But there, there's Christmas pudding.
So, what else we got? I'm just throwing that one out there on Sunday.
Well, Rachel's not here, because she's performing in the Christmas pudding, is it, play? At the library, which will be in the library at 2:00, it's really nice, so.
What day is that?
Saturday.
It's Saturday.
That's Saturday. And there is also a benefit for lamps on Saturday from 9:01. It's craft fair and a benefit for the Lubeck art and music.
Lubeck area.
Lubeck area, music.
Just ask Kurt.
Society. Society, excellent.
Ask Kurt, I love that.
So, that's a wonderful thing they did this summer.
LCOC has a veterans' party on Saturday.
What about, um, the food? What about the food, I mean, the food bank is going to be opening for people for the holiday, I mean, is there going to be a certain, between now and Christmas, the third time?
I do, I do not know, but that would be advancing.
I saw them the day, they're going to have a meal for older folks.
Yeah, that's, LCOC, that's the one, that's Saturday.
Well, they told me, they told me I was going to come, because I was over 50.
Way to get your fruit basket, Jason.
Well, tell us, tell us what it's like, because we're not.
It's really sweet.
I'd like to announce, remind the public, the dog licenses are due at the end of the year, December 30. And that the town office will be closed on Christmas Eve.
Lubeck Christmas Festival of Lights being Sugar and Spice Thursday, December 13th, 6:00 PM, Christmas pageant play at Lubeck Cafeteria. Friday, December 14th, 6:00 PM, activities at the town parson, tree decorating. Sunday, December 16th, 1:00 to 3:00 PM, kitty bingo and crafts at the Lubeck School. And 6:00 to 8:00 PM is the Christmas movie at the school. And then Sunday is the grand, oh, Sunday is the lamps and arts and crafts fair at the school. 11:00 is Christmas Soapbox Derby Race on the Seaview Hill. Wow, that's good, that'll be fun. And from 12:00 to 3:00, the Children's Christmas Party at the Lubeck Legion. And then, hosted by the, that's Sunday, then hosted by the Lubeck Women's Auxiliary. And 6:00 PM, Christmas Parade lineup at the school. Wow. Those guys have been busy, Wanda and everyone, thank you. That's, what, are these being circulated in the town?
I don't know.
That is wonderful, I'm glad we were to announce that, I don't know if anybody's really watching, but.
They haven't.
They are on Facebook tonight.
We wish everybody happy holidays?
Yes. Holiday, sing. We have to go, we're going to close, but we are going into executive session for confidential records, 1 MRS A4056.